Good evening, West Orange, and welcome to our West Orange Town Council Conference Agenda for November 24th. Madam Clerk, would you kindly please read the opening statement?
This is to inform the general public that this meeting is being held in compliance with Section 5 of the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, Public Law 1975. A notice of this meeting was mailed to the Star Ledger and the West Orange Chronicle on December 1st, 2014. A notice of this meeting was also posted on the bulletin board in the municipal building, West Orange, and filed in the office of the Municipal Clerk of the Township of West Orange on December 1st, 2014. Councilwoman Castellino?
Present.
Councilwoman Kropoviac?
Present.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Present.
Council President Garino?
Present. Thank you, Madam Clerk. First of all, in this festive time, a great Thanksgiving coming up just in the next couple of days, it's good to have you with us tonight. Tonight, we have what I like to call one of our best things we do in the town councils, is to honor one of our many recreational youth programs, and particularly the mountaintop United Soccer, Girls Soccer Team, the Fury, the 12-year-olds, the under-12s. So tonight, on behalf of the Township Council and the Township of West Orange, we'd like to present you with a citation commemorating your victory, your very good season, your good sportsmanship, and your contributions in the Township of West Orange.
I think you've kind of said it all.
Well, I do want to say, though, that I know that the team held second position for two seasons in a row, and this season, they took first place, so that's why they're here, so welcome, girls.
Thank you, Susan. And I know all of my council colleagues agree with Councilwoman McCartney just says, "We are very proud of you, and congratulations, more championship seasons," and of course, like I said before, we look forward to you at the high school, that's, you know, our next girls' team, so we look forward to it. I said, "No parents, don't, don't..." Okay. Just like to read the citation. I'm not going to read out all the names, the coach can do it, because I don't want to make a mistake and get people mad at me, so when I have the coach come up and he presents the individual citations, he can, he can mention their names. So, here we go. Citation of the West Orange Township Council recognizing the West Orange United Football Club Fury Girls U-12. For the West, the West Orange Township Council is proud to recognize the West Orange United Football Club Fury U-12 Girls Team. The West Orange United Football Club Fury U-12 Girls Team won the Essex Fall Tune-Up Tournament in the fall of 2014, and for two seasons, the Fury was in first place all season, only to slip into second place in the final game. The fall of 2015, however, has seen the Fury in first place all season. Their, their first season on a large-sided field, the team combined with 27 goals, allowing only two goals against all season, winning their flight and finishing with a record of 9-0-1. On that record, the Township Council congratulates the team on their excellent sportsmanship and wishes them continued success in the future. And if I can have the coach come up, Coach Dan, could you come up, please? You can say something. I just want to present this to you for the club. This is a copy of the citation, that's from the Township Council, so this is for you guys to keep, okay? This, Coach, you can hand, there's one for each individual girl. Please feel free to make your comments.
First, I would like to thank the Town Council and Mayor Parisi for honoring the Fury, especially Susan for getting us in so quickly on such short notice. Susan knows some of the girls from First Mountain Preschool, which we both taught them, and she also sponsors Little Kickers, which is where a lot of these girls started. So, that was, it's a great program, we thank West Orange. Jerry also knows the girls from the tournament and refing, and thanking everyone for giving this town such excellent facilities to work with, and we couldn't do it without the town. So, thank you very much for the program from everybody and the girls.
Thank you.
So, girls, when I call you up, just come on up, and Coach John has certificates, okay? We've had a lot of girls come through the program, and this is our ninth season, the Fury.
When they're done, just have them come up here?
Yep, absolutely. So you're going to come up, get from Coach John, and then come on up to the council. These are the girls that joined us in season nine, Jimena. You're straight from Coach John. And then walk up here, sweetie. Nia. And Soliana, I'm not sure she's here. Nope, no Soliana. Okay, in season eight, Esme joined us. Season seven, Camille. Olivia joined us in season four. Back in season two, when we became the actual Fury, and we split from the Magic in the Fury. And Caitlin. And there are only two originals left from the original team, Anna. And Lizzie.
Yeah, ladies, come in back. All people in the back. All people in the back, sure, people like being in the front.
Moving tight, girls.
I always sit on my chair.
27 weeks for it.
That's a great record, 27 goals against and two quarters?
Uh-huh. And they cry all the time. And once you got kicked in the head, that was it, it was like three minutes ago in the game.
Unless you want to stay up here, I'll go. Congratulations, buddy. Nice job, ladies. Okay. Yeah, she was just downstairs. Again. Again, ladies, Fury, congratulations, thank you very much.
Great job.
Congratulations to your parents, too. That one, still, I got to get them here next meeting.
Yeah.
You know. I wanted to call you next meeting, but I got to get the Pau.
Yeah, I've been asking for that, we need that, so give me all the information, and we'll get them on.
I'll get it, I'll get it from Tuesday soon, because the game is just Saturday night.
Okay.
Too soon to get them here tonight.
No, but next meeting.
Plus, the coaches had a meeting tonight.
No, that's great, Michelle, that's great. Just give Karen everything she needs.
Outside.
And put it on the next, next month, the meeting agenda, for the Pau. Thank you. And that was nice to honor the girls' team, and I urge all our residents, really, you should be very proud of these girls, and all our total, all our recreation programs, because these kids really go on, they fill up to the high school, and, and just like our boys' soccer team, had a fantastic, fantastic season, they had an undefeated record, but in the end, this past weekend, the boys lost a real heartbreaker, 1-0 to Washington Township, but we all deserve to give them our appreciation, and to be very, very proud of our boys' high school soccer team. So, we should always think about them and really thank them, so they did a great job. Congratulations, West Orange High. Okay, next on our agenda is our Downtown Alliance Executive Director, Ms. Brill, and she's going to make a presentation. Good evening, Megan.
Thank you. I apologize for being a little late getting up here. I wanted tonight to talk about the proceeds of our mayor's 5K run to break the silence. As you know, we share the profits with the Mayor Sunshine Fund, the Downtown Alliance, and the National Ovarian Cancer Coalition. Tonight, we have a representative from the National Ovarian Cancer Coalition, Deb Batista, who will tell us a little bit about what the, what the run does, who the National Ovarian Cancer Coalition is, and then we'll present the big check. Go ahead, Deb.
Thank you. As Megan mentioned, my name is Deborah Batista, and I represent the state of New Jersey for the National Ovarian Cancer Coalition. Our mission is to fight tirelessly to prevent and cure ovarian cancer, and to improve the quality of life for survivors. So, even though that is our mission, I always tell people the most important thing to remember are three words, it is "prevent, cure, and survivors." So, prevention is all about education and awareness, and we do about 40 to 50 health fairs throughout the state every year. It is also about the survivors, we have a program called Faces of Hope, which we give a packet of information to every woman who is newly diagnosed with ovarian cancer through hospitals. And then, the big piece is a cure. We are a part of Stand Up to Cancer, and for the first time this year, in July of 2015, we are supporting an ovarian cancer dream team for the next three and a half years, that are going to focus on, hopefully, a breakthrough with ovarian cancer, so we're very proud of that. So, I want to thank Megan, who has been outstanding to work with. I could not have asked for a better partner in crime. We had, it was just wonderful to work with. The mayor's 5K is our largest fundraiser in the state of New Jersey right now for the NOCC. I know what's been going on for the last nine years, this is my first year being a part of it, and I loved every minute of it, and without Megan's help, I don't know if it could have happened, but she has been just outstanding to work with, and I thank you very much for all you do to help our cause.
You're very welcome, and we're always here for you. Thank you, thank you for coming tonight.
I just have one other thing that I, that I, that we should mention. I guess the mayor's 5K run has been around for 24 years, 24th or 25th year. Nine years ago, we met a resident, Shari Beth Suskin, who is a survivor. She was diagnosed the same time that Senator Cody's secretary, Maureen, was diagnosed, and Maureen didn't make it, Shari Beth did make it. And through efforts really with her and her fundraising ability, this run was able to take off, and every year has doubled and tripled. This year, we partnered, Deb is brand new, I think she, when did you start, like a month before our run?
Nine months.
Yeah, nine months ago, we've been, you know, the second day, she got the job, she kind of came in and we met, and we really just were able to turn, we raised $10,000 more than we raised last year. We, the amount of volunteer support, and I've been talking about this the last couple of months at, at meetings here, so this isn't new to you all, but it truly is a terrible form of cancer that we need a test, we need diagnosis early, and the money that we raised in West Orange will definitely help that fight. So, we, thanks Shari Beth, she has family visiting, it's a bad time to have a meeting before Thanksgiving, so she couldn't be here, but, I know you all want to get out of here. So, we have a big check, John McElroy, Chairman, was supposed to be here, so he's going to be...
He is here, Mr. McElroy's not here.
Oh, come on up, Chairman, because I want you in the photo op, not me.
You can come to the unit, too?
Yes, I guess I have to. This is our brand-new Downtown Alliance check.
Isn't that cute? She didn't like the numbers, that's what we will do.
Exactly.
I was obsessing about my companionship. The bill check is in Dale's pocket.
I'm taking this one.
This really, John's taking it for the... Do you have it? Yep. Thanks. I'll take that over Christmas night.
Great.
Thank you, thank you. Have a great Thanksgiving, and we'll see you next year.
Congratulations, yes.
Bye, Deb. It was good, you can go anywhere you want. See you soon. Okay, so when I'm not planning the 5K run with Deb, I am working on the Holiday Open House and a couple other things. This Saturday is Small Business Saturday, I don't know if any of you spoke about it, but this Saturday, the Saturday after Thanksgiving, is Small Business Saturday. It's an event that is in part sponsored by American Express to support the local and small, small businesses in your, in your town. We, everyone knows Black Friday is the big bucks store, you know, the whole world wants you to go out and shop in the malls and spend all your money. Well, Small Business Saturday is to save a little bit of money to be spent locally. We are encouraging everyone in West Orange to celebrate small business West Orange by buying goods and services and products that you need, use, and want, right here in West Orange. And, so that's this Saturday, you'll see posters and flyers, there are special events happening in all the local, small businesses throughout the town. The following Saturday is the Holiday Open House, which is a one-day event this year, it's Holiday Open House entry lighting, all in one day. We are asking everyone to start out at 10 o'clock in the morning, at the new gym with the Community House, which is, yes, there you go, it's 252 Main Street, thank you, Jerry, and, and then spend the day downtown. There'll be different events going on, Santa will be here, you'll be able to see Santa at a whole host of places throughout town. We are working with the, the museum, and the trolley rides through Llewellyn Park, which is, you know, not new, we've been doing it for about 10 years, and it's amazing to me that people come on that, you know, year after year, we get 300, 400 people that show up to take the trolley ride. We do have an extended tour inside Llewellyn Park, you'll be able to see the Chubb House and Charles Edison's House, which is new, and, and a whole bunch of other things to do. Once you're downtown, we're hoping that at 4:00 or 5:00 o'clock, you end up coming over here for the tree lighting and the arrival of Santa on the fire truck, and that's what this flyer is all about. So if you see it downtown, you can QR code and get the schedules of everything that's happening downtown. Okay, that's that. Then, the last thing I have is an invitation. I guess about a year ago, we began our, the Downtown Alliance's strategic plan, and as you know, we hired a consultant, or we got a consultant from Main Street, New Jersey, she was free to us because we're an associate community, and we began that study. We finished our survey, and now we know exactly what everyone thinks of downtown, what they want, what they need, what their perceptions are, and the next step is to have a smaller strategic plan meeting. That meeting is set for, there's an invitation, that meeting is set for January 7th, we're inviting all of you people, not you Karen, unless, of course, you want to come, but we did invite, actually, Ken Kaiser came last year to the strategic plan, it was really helpful, so Ken, we'd love you to come back. This will be a smaller group, but it's the second step in the strategic plan. We're going to start honing in on exactly what we need to do in this coming year, and then the next two to three to five years. So that's, it's, it's very important for you to understand and hear what the survey results were, and we're inviting town council members, specific members of our community, key stakeholders that are property owners and business owners. So that is January 7th, I wanted to get that on your calendar, and I think that that's it, unless you have any questions. When is the menorah lighting? I'm sorry, menorah lighting? I think Hanukkah's the same day.
December 7th, the menorah lighting is December 7th.
Four o'clock, there you go. Okay. All right. That's good. Thanks, everybody.
Thank you, Megan, happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you.
See you at the Holiday Open House. Okay. That's, that will be the end of our conference agenda, and we'll be right back with our public meeting. Thank you. Councilwoman, Councilwoman Castellino?
I will be liaison appointment shortly, hopefully, if you all say yes. But I met with the PR Commission two weeks ago as a guest that evening, and what a great meeting it was. There was about 13 people present, which was a great turnout for that meeting. There was all the commissioners, the newly-appointed commissioners, and I'd like to thank all the new commissioners that stepped up to be on the committee, we have a lot of great talent out there, folks that are in the field, we have a few realtors on the commission, so it's a very exciting time. They're a very energetic group, they're very great with the technology, which I wish, hopefully, I will learn a few things from them, a few shortcuts that I could get on my phone and on the computer, but it was a great energetic meeting, so they're going, they've been out there helping us promote for the Small Business Day next Saturday, and just to follow up on what Megan said, it'd be great if many members of the community could go out to support all these local businesses. So many times, we're knocking on their door, especially if you're in the school community and the booster clubs, always knocking on their doors to donate, and they've been very generous and giving back to our students and all our organizations in town, so we could go out and recognize them next Saturday, and not just next Saturday, but on other days, but to give back to them and make them feel appreciated and let them know they made a great investment investing here in West Orange. Also, the, we also talked about having a Realtor Open House for, to invite realtors in at Liberty Middle School, and I've been talking to Superintendent Ratsky to get a date for the committee, that'll be sometime early spring, maybe late winter, before the realtors get busy and we could educate them more about this township and the school district, and what, what other, what other programs we have in town with the Recreation Department. And also, I just want to thank Nick Salis. Nick Salis had met with John Calavano at the school board, and they had a nice chat about recycling. And as Councilwoman McCartney knows, our students have been after the school district to be more proactive with the recycling, Nick assisted with the Buildings and Grounds Director there, so I'd just like to thank him for taking his time, it was a great meeting, he said, and hopefully, they worked out some kinks to have more recycling done within the school community.
Thanks. Great.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilwoman. And the other...
Now, I'll stop there.
Councilwoman Kropoviac?
Thank you, Council President. I don't have any announcements from the two committees that, commissions that I'm liaison on, but my wife here is here tonight, and she's both a Girl Scout leader and a chauffeur, so she's hoping that we move on to public comment so that she can make her annual announcement about the coat drive, and if she isn't, then I'm going to get up and give it at the public comment, but she's a much better Girl Scout leader than I am, so...
We should be going to public comments.
Okay. Then I pass.
No, that's okay. I just want to say a big shout-out to Downtown Alliance, another great, we're going to have another great open house, Holiday Open House, really good, you get to see the new Community House gym, that's coming into reality on Main Street, which is a great, you know, thing for our Community House and Mr. Paul Sito. Of course, also for Small Business Weekend, it's a great thing, American Express puts a lot out there, because it makes, the backbone of every Main Street are our small businesses, our small vendors, and we need to support them, and I appreciate Councilwoman Castellino making a mention, because it's very, very important that they come. Also, real quickly, we had our first meeting of the West Orange Pedestrian Safety Advisory Board, a great meeting, we had some great data come out of it. Rutgers University is ready to make their presentation soon on our Complete Streets, which will be, will be incorporated into our pedestrian safety model. We're getting a lot of input from the county, and a lot of support from the county, and we're going to move ahead with a lot of our ventures. And the last thing I'd like to say is to, a big shout-out to the West Orange High School Boys Soccer Team and Coach Doug Nevins. You guys deserve a lot of credit, a lot of appreciation for the township, we're very proud of you, and we look forward to another great season next year. I know it was a hard game on Sunday down at Kane University, you played your hearts out, and I know I can speak on behalf of my council colleagues, we owe you a debt of appreciation, we're sincerely, sincerely proud of you. Thank you. Councilwoman McCartney?
Thank you. So, I am the liaison to the planning board, but we haven't seen the planning board agenda yet, we'll meet on December 11th. I do know that the zoning board is in the middle of listening to the chit-chat diner application, if you're interested about that. I, tomorrow is the Chamber Thanksgiving Luncheon, so once that's over, I would like you to save the date, February 3rd, for the mayor's, well, for the Chamber's annual breakfast, where the mayor presents the State of the Town address location to be announced. We talked about Small Business Saturday, I would like everyone to know that also the West Orange Arts Council, they have a gallery and gift shop, and that will be open on November 28th for the Small Business Saturday, also to visit them on Valley Road. 551 Valley Road, so many people coming in, 555, let's see what else. So we have the, my colleagues didn't mention this, but we have Dr. Zal Velez and Dr. Josie Velez, they are producing a play on Philippine history, and it is an all-star cast.
Yes.
Michelle and Rodolfo Rodriguez are our king and queen. It is the history of the Philippines, this will be on, I'm sorry, December 12th, at 3:00 o'clock at Liberty Middle School.
I believe my colleagues here, the gentleman are also included.
Yeah, Joe is our councilman.
I'm going to go through my fitting tomorrow.
Yes, oh, I, okay, I'm narrating, Joe is captain, I believe, one of the four captains on Magellan Ship.
I thought we agreed that, wouldn't mention me, because that might drive away people that would attend, but yes, the secret's out.
I don't think, I don't think that would drive people away.
Oh, my goodness, but, all right, so Senator Nia Gill, Brendan Gill-Freiholders are in it, Len Luciano, I think the county exec, I don't know if you have this on your notes, but Anthony, County Executive Joe D. has a role, who's just, like I said, an all-star cast, so this will be at Liberty Middle School on December 12th.
Oh, I actually have tickets on me.
At 3:00.
If anybody would like to purchase any this evening.
Going once.
You want to come and see us? Okay.
The chamber member, chamber member meeting will be on December 12th at 6:30 at the library, welcome to come, and I think that's all I have for now.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, this is very difficult to talk about, but there is a worldwide candle lighting ceremony, we started this a few years for Nikhil Badlani, but it really is a worldwide event, it happens on the second Sunday in December, it's Candle Lighting Ceremony to remember children that have died, never to be forgotten. This year, it will be Sunday, December 9th, at the Toby Katz Field House, it's not usually an announcement, because it is difficult to talk about, and it's so solemn, but it is a beautiful ceremony, and I think that people find strength and comfort and solace when, when they meet. We float candles on Vincent's Pond at, at the Field House, and if you would like more information, you can look at compassionatefriends.org, and like I said, it is a worldwide event, it starts at 6:45, and it, it, candles are lit all over the world, and you're invited to attend.
It's a great thing.
Okay, the other announcement I wanted to make is that we're getting, I've noticed on Facebook, people talking about solicitation, the only group that has approval to solicit in town right now is the Clean Water Action. They have been canvassing, that's the only activity that should be happening in town if anyone else comes to your door, please call the police. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
You're welcome.
Okay. We'll go right into our public meeting. Good evening, West Orange, welcome to our November 24th Town Council Public Meeting. Madam Clerk, would you kindly please read the opening statement?
This is to inform the general public that this meeting is being held in compliance with Section 5 of the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, Public Law 1975.
The only group that has approval to solicit in town right now is the Clean Water Action. They have been canvassing. That's the only activity that should be happening in town. If anyone else comes to your door, please call the police. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
You're welcome.
Okay. We'll go right into our public meeting. Good evening, West Orange. Welcome to our November 24th Town Council Public Meeting. Madam Clerk, would you kindly please read the opening statement?
This is to inform the general public that this meeting is being held in compliance with Section 5 of the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, Public Law 1975. A notice of this meeting was mailed to the Star Ledger and the West Orange Chronicle on December 1st, 2014. A notice of this meeting was also posted on the bulletin board in the municipal building, West Orange, and filed in the office of the Municipal Clerk of the Township of West Orange on December 1st, 2014. Councilwoman Castellino?
Present.
Councilwoman Krokowjak?
Present.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Present.
Council President Guarino?
Present.
Will everyone please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The council is now in their public meeting.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Okay, I would now like to open the floor to public comment. I wasn't going to, Claire, would you like to come up, please? I wasn't going to forget you.
Thank you, Council President, for allowing me to go first. Claire Silvestri, 20 Grandview Avenue. The weather has really gotten cold the past few days. Winter coats, people are pulling them out. And it's a good time to remember that we are, the West Orange Girl Scouts are again collecting coats for New Jersey Cares Coat Drive. It's our 11th straight year. From now through December 5th, town residents can donate new or gently-used coats of any size and style. I know that there are collection bins at Mount Pleasant School and Redwood Schools, as well as in the front of Our Lady of Lord's Church in the front vestibule, and the lobby of the old St. Joseph's School on Benvenu Avenue. The Girl Scouts will sort the coats by size and deliver them to Jersey Cares, where they will be distributed to those in need. Last year, through the generosity of residents, we collected more than 150 coats. And based on collections so far, we expect 2015 to be an even better year. So if you have any questions, you could drop me a line. My email is claresk3@yahoo.com, or you can call me at 973-736-7285. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Claire. Have a great Thanksgiving, and thank you for the great work you do with the Girl Scouts and the Coat Drive.
Thank you. Same to you.
Yes, anyone wishing to speak to the Township Council? Yes, ma'am. Good evening. Please go to, speaking to the microphone, and please give us your name and address, please.
Sure. Hi, Rita Yohalem. Live at 20 Davy Drive in West Orange. And I'm glad to be here this evening to talk to you. I'm here representing a group of concerned citizens in the West Essex Highlands and in the neighboring communities within West Orange. First, of course, I'd like to thank the council members for the work that they do for West Orange, because I've been on boards and so forth, and I understand what your kind of service entails, and we definitely appreciate that. And also, for those of you who have in the past supported environmental issues, we're very appreciative of that as well. We are very pleased to see recently a resolution that was passed by the West Orange Space and Recreation Committee, Commission, advocating preservation of Block 179, Lot 32, which is property that is adjacent to the West Essex Highlands and is privately owned, about 120-plus acres, to be ultimately, has a piece of property that could possibly be developed. And the resolution that the Space and Recreation Commission passed was advocating the preservation of this property, which is something that we know has been in your plan. The master plan, which was updated in 2010, indicates that the desire for preservation of that particular piece specifically mentioned is in your plan and in the commission's plan of items that they were going to deal with. The property contains much natural beauty, you know, very great vistas, steep slopes, wetlands, including the headwaters of the Canoe Brook, and tens of thousands of mature trees, and of course, diverse wildlife flora and fauna. The negative impacts of a development, which could include flooding and other environmental risks due to the steep slopes and to the removal of some 27,000 trees, and the safety and quality of life issues that would relate, would be involved with blasting and heavy equipment and vehicle traffic that would be going on during a construction phase. There would be, we think, also increased costs to the community for schools, fire, police, et cetera, with additional residents, and a permanent increase on Warner, in terms of traffic, on Warner, Oval, and Eagle Rock due to the lack of egress anywhere else throughout the Highlands. It's not an area that is easily accessible. There's only one way in and one way out. As mentioned before, we know that in the master plan, this had been one of the goals, to preserve this particular piece of land. And so we are talking to the council now, because what we'd like to do is partner with you. We've been in touch with some of the conservancies in the area, both the Land Conservancy of New Jersey and the Trust for Public Land, who have indicated to us that if the council wishes them to work with them, that they would be able to help access funds. We understand, obviously, that the township does not have lots and lots of excess money to be purchasing such a large piece of property. But the conservancies feel that with the cooperation of the township, that they would have the ability to reach out to donors, private donors, and also state and county funding that might possibly help make this a possibility. So we urge the council to support these efforts. We hope that you will. And we thank you, of course, for that participation and for that support. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you for your time this evening. Yes, sir. Good evening.
Good evening.
Please state, into the microphone, sir, please state your name and address, please.
Of course, Abraham Bunus, 32 Bayowski Road, West Orange. I come here to speak for the land that sits adjacent to where I live, that is Plot 179 slash 32. Here, we sit under a seal that the West Orange Town Fathers thought appropriate to be the seal of this town. And the emblem contains three plows, which I think denotes the fact that in spite of the fact that we are no longer a pastoral farming community that we might have been in 1900, we are still a community that respects land. And land that is protected in terms of it being open space has recently, within the past 10 years, been seen as important for the health, environment, and well-being of this town. I ask that, in the course of your deliberations, in the course of your consideration of the question that will no doubt be put before you, that you consider the importance of keeping Plot 179 slash 32 bare, undeveloped, and beautiful. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bunus. Is there anyone else wishing to speak to the Township Council? Yes, ma'am. Good evening. Please speak your name and address, please. Thank you.
Marla Siri, 4 Corwell Circle, West Orange, naturally. Dear Township Council, I have several issues of concern that I share with many others in the township. First off is the issue of leaf collecting. This year has been the worst year of leaf collection I have ever seen. Many of my neighbors and other residents on nearby streets are voicing the same issues. There are leaves not being picked up, they're not coming as often as they were. When I called up Public Works, I was told that my section has leaf pickup on Veterans Day, National Holiday, and municipal offices are closed. Yet I was told that they were in the area, yet people on my street, including myself, did not see this, and the leaves stay piled up. I paid my landscaper $275 for leaves to blow right back on my yard. Riding through the town, you see huge leaf piles all over. This was never like this before. When I called Public Works to complain, Mr. Sanis claimed that for 50 years it was done this way, and I indicated to him that you had come more often. He said, "No, no amount of, it's the same amount of time always." I found a 2009 leaf pickup schedule when I was going through old paperwork. It shows every month in the fall was an 11-day pickup span per section. This year, it's five-day pickup span, clearly half of the time. Last year, leaves were picked up, it seemed, all of the town. Many other people are saying the same thing. We all can't be mistaken. The town never had piles of leaves piled up for weeks on end, and when they do come, the next pickup is mid-December. So yet another month you wait. Leaves are supposed to stay on your lawn because the website claims you can't put them out more than seven days before the scheduled pickup. It's a total mess and unacceptable. Then on top of that, snow and ice, and then you have hazardous conditions. The residents of this town are paying high taxes for a marginal, at-best school system, municipal taxes for leaves to stay piled up on curves for a month at a time, and snow being plowed in driveways in huge ice mountains. My area last year had Grabowski for snow removal, and our street's snow removal was horrendous. Not only did they plow everyone in with huge ice chunks that no snow blower could get through. Several people on my street's driveways were cracked and crumbled by the plows breaking up the aprons. My next-door neighbor's driveway was terrible, horrible thick chunks of ash fault broken up. And when it was reported, Grabowski did the sloppiest job possible in fixing this. What is going on with the quality of service in this town? It is going downhill at the fastest rate I've ever seen. Taxes are going higher, service is going lower. Where is all this tax revenue going? A block from me, they build Viscaia Luxury Living. They go for $2.5 million. They start at $700,000. Taxes are $28,000 to $70,000. These children have no children, mostly. Where is this revenue going? It was undeveloped land. Why is this service going downhill? Where are the leaves, and why are they not being picked up properly and not as frequently? I heard two streets in town were paved for over $600,000. Did that money come from leaf collection money? Will this year the snow be plowed six feet high and you have to chisel through it with an ice pick? Many people I know are saying that they're going to pull their cars halfway in the street this year, blocking the plow. Is that what has to be done to get by? Last year, I had to sit and wait by the window all day, run out each time they came, begging and pleading with them not to plow it in. They can't go a few more feet over and push the snow past the driveway instead of leaving the huge mounds in front of every driveway. And that snow they push, it's not soft, it's rock-hard. I broke two shovels last year trying to get through it. I hope they will look into these issues and you will address them as quickly as possible. I understand the leaf collection is too late to make changes now, but improvement is needed for next year. And please do something before the snow comes about snow removal. The plows seem to do more damage plowing the street and plowing everyone in and breaking up their driveways, and this just is not acceptable. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else, please? Yes, sir. Good evening, sir.
Good evening. Thank you. Alan Yohalem, 20 Davy Drive, West Orange. Just very quickly, I have a question. I understand there is an item on the agenda, a resolution talking about an executive session to discuss the Highlands area. My question is, when will that executive session be held? And will the public be notified of the results of that? And finally, when will it be appropriate for representatives of the Highlands and other residents of West Orange be able to discuss this matter that was brought to the attention, your attention, by the first two? That's all I'd like to know.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? In the back? Yes.
Good evening, Leanne Zalino, 589 Mount Pleasant Avenue, West Orange, New Jersey. At the November 10th, 2015 council meeting, there was a presentation to the council by Wayne DeFeo, the consultant hired by the town and paid for by the vendor for the recycling center. Unfortunately, the presentation was not about addressing complaints from the neighbors. It was all about bullying me, a taxpayer and a resident, for speaking up. In going over Mr. DeFeo's presentation, he said the recycling center was generally in compliance, and he repeated that several times. In seven out of eight of his recent inspections between May and August of 2015, his report states the site was out of compliance in the size of the windows and out of compliance for not turning and reconstructing the windows. In response to my question about window temps, Mr. DeFeo stated that if the windows were properly formed and designed, that the temperature would never fluctuate. His 517 inspection report and 531 inspection report and 617-15 inspection report did not take a temperature reading. The temperature reading of the compost piles was from April 30th. June 29th and 718 inspection reports had temperature readings of the compost piles from 331-15. I need clarification on why he uses old data. This is why I was having trouble deciphering his reports at the last council meeting. Given discussion about spontaneous combustion and the Easter Sunday fire, it seems prudent to monitor the temp of the piles less, you know, more frequently, not less. October 19th and October 22nd, DEP compliance and enforcement verified two off-site odor violations. When it comes to odor traveling off-site, one has to look at the vendor. Significant release of anaerobic odors from a composting site is usually a symptom of some important management factor that has been neglected. When Councilwoman Castellino questioned DeFeo on how long the odors might last, he said generally a day, but he admitted he didn't know how long that was. His casual attitude was deplorable. Mr. DeFeo also said he generally does his inspections on Sundays. If he had done his inspection on Sunday, November 1st, I would have never had pictures to take on November 2nd. When I sampled his inspection reports from March through August of 2015, only two inspections were done on Sundays in May. Mr. DeFeo's October 25th, 2014 inspection report stated, in response to an inspection by DEP, a more accurate measure of the Class B material was done during his inspection. Utilizing his calculations for slope and variable, his own report admits that he was off by 40% in his calculations of the total volume on the site. He blew it for me there as to whether or not he has the ability to eyeball what is wrong with the site. Mr. DeFeo stated the noise is within acceptable limits. According to him, a lawnmower uses, is louder than dump trucks, bulldozers, and grinders. But no one is forced to listen to a lawnmower from 7:30 in the morning until 6:00 PM, seven days a week. Many of the improvements that he noted are in fact compliance with regulations. They were not done out of the goodness of the vendor's heart. The most outrageous part of the presentation was he did not fact-check his personal attack on me. He presented a slideshow with a drone photograph of trees that he alleged the vendor planted on my property that was a flat-out lie. He stated that the vendor dug a trench around my house. Here's the pictures from 2010 of my husband digging a trench for our solar panels. I have no idea what the vendor was talking about. He stated that I got free mulch and free dirt. Is free mulch and free dirt that everybody in town gets supposed to silence me when it smells? I don't think so. He further tried to vilify me by saying that the vendor gave me a whole-house air filtration system. That was also a lie. And even if he did, that doesn't help me if I want to open the windows unless I want to live in my house 24/7/365. His presentation should have focused on the complaints and compliance instead of bringing me and my property into the situation. He stressed the site was in compliance with acceptable limits of finished and unfinished product. What he glossed over was the fact that the site sits in a residential neighborhood, and according to DEP and the contract with the vendor, they are out of compliance more often than not. Don't hide behind acceptable limits of mulch and tree parts when it smells up the neighborhood. Acceptable limits are having a negative impact on residents. It's your job to ensure that we all can share the same neighborhood in peace and quiet. Council President Guarino made a statement at the last meeting. Council President Guarino made a statement at the last meeting that residents should speak to the council with respect at all times. I do not think that that presentation two weeks ago was respectful towards me at all.
Your time is up.
And you all allowed it to happen, and for that, you owe me an apology.
Thank you, Ms. O'Leary. Mr. Carter? Are you here to speak tonight at the Township Council?
I am.
Okay. Who would like to speak first?
Rosemary.
No, I kept...I was...but I was...you know what I'm saying, so...yes, ma'am, please. Good evening. Just state your name and address, please, into the microphone. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Anna Patillo. I reside at 26 Kingly Street. I've been a resident of West Orange for over thirty-two years. In those years, I have owned a business and operated a business for twelve years, and I was an active volunteer for the former First Aid Squad for approximately fifteen years. As many of us know, West Orange has prided itself on being a well-diverse community in which many cultural and heritage events are celebrated and are recognized throughout the year and have been consistently through the years. However, there is an ethnic group that locally has had no formal or consistent recognition and are seldomly celebrated, but one who has a grand history of helped early settlers survive their new world, suffering hardships during mass relocations, yet still made great contributions during wartime, with some tribes having a large percentage of their members enlisted, helping fight in those wars, which made America what it is today. That is one of the Native Americans, indigenous peoples, one whose cultural background is rich in traditions, arts, and values. West Orange's very own foundation is one of which parcels of land were purchased at various times in the mid-1600s from a band of the Lenape tribe. West Orange also has trails that run throughout it that the Lenape frequently traveled. Additionally, West Orange has a brook that runs through much of downtown and that the Native Americans made their Wigwam homes along this brook. Eventually, it was given the name the Wigwam Brook, which it is still known as today. In 1990, it was declared that November be recognized as National Native American Heritage Month, more commonly known as Native American Heritage Month by those who aren't even aware of its decorum. This bill reads in part that "The President has authorized and requested to call upon federal, state, and local governments, groups, and organizations, and the people of the United States to observe this month with appropriate programs, ceremonies, activities, and are encouraged to provide educational programs regarding Native American history, rights, culture, and contemporary issues for overall awareness." Later in 2008, it was signed into law legislation to designate the Friday after Thanksgiving as Native American Heritage Day. The Native American Heritage Day bill designates the day to pay tribute to Native Americans for their many contributions to the United States. The Native American Heritage Day bill encourages American of all backgrounds to observe Native American Heritage Day through appropriate ceremonies and activities. It also encourages public elementary and secondary schools to enhance student understanding of Native Americans by providing classroom instruction focusing on their history, achievements, and contributions. Which brings me to my purpose and respectful proposal that West Orange officially recognize a time during November to formally recognize Native Americans. It is suggested and would be fitting to recognize that time to be the week of Thanksgiving. My strong feelings of this subject comes about from a multitude of reasons, but primarily because I am full-blooded Laguna Pueblo Native American adoptee. That adoption took place during a time when the government was running a program in the 50s and the early 60s called the Indian Adoption Project. The project helped Native American children be placed into non-Native families, but due to the love and support from my family, I was encouraged to know my ethnic background, and ultimately, I was able to unite with my birth family, most of whom still live on the reservations. Today, there is approximately 5.4 million Native Americans in the U.S., and while not a plight of mine, 30% are still living on reservations in substandard conditions comparable to the Third World. They have the highest rates of unemployment, infant mortality, health challenges, suicides per capita, and I can go on. This is not the past. This is USA today. I feel that it's time for West Orange, with its admirable diverse community and its bit of history with Native American influence, should honor the past, recognize, raise awareness, and provide educational resources of the Native Americans that live locally and throughout the United States. That recognition is long overdue. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Thank you very much for your presentation. Yes. Mr. Carter, Mr. Romo?
Good evening.
State your name and address, please.
My name is Tim Carter, and I live at 6 Oxford Terrace. I'm a resident of the town for nine years, and I have twin sons, Eli and Lucas, who attend fifth grade at the Mount Pleasant Elementary School. Many people know me for my PTA work. I serve on three PTA boards, in fact. I'm the fifth-grade VP of the Mount Pleasant PTA, the treasurer of the Essex County PTA, and the president of the West Orange Council of PTAs. I was recently appointed to our town's Human Relations Commission, and my interest in serving with the organization was all about my commitment to celebrating the diversity of West Orange. My sons have two fathers. Our nuclear family is composed of three races, and my sons are classified with special needs. I'm here this evening in support of Anna Patillo's proposal that our township acknowledge and celebrate the week of Thanksgiving next year as Native American Heritage Week, and specifically, the day after Thanksgiving as Native American Heritage Day. On a personal note, while the majority of my ancestors apparently came to this country from Europe, I do have Cherokee blood in my veins as well. I adopted my sons...my infant sons from Guatemala, and their birth mother is of Mayan descent, so I feel the connection to indigenous people in that sense as well. As a former producer for the children's television series Sesame Street, I had the privilege of traveling to Montana to shoot several episodes related to a storyline in which Big Bird visits the extended family of his new friend, Francis Bearclaw, on the reservation of the Crow Nation there. I learned of the beautiful artistry of the Native American people, of their spirituality, and of their profound respect for their elders and for nature. However, I also observed with great sadness how their people are often plagued by poverty and alcoholism, and that the quiet nature of Native Americans often leaves them without a voice amidst all the noise of politics these days. But to me, one of the most compelling reasons to celebrate Native American Heritage Day and Week here is that West Orange leads the way in embracing diversity while also remembering and honoring the past. To recognize the spirit of the Lenape people who originally inhabited this area and to promote awareness and gratitude for the ongoing contributions of Native Americans to our area and our nation as a whole, I respectfully request that our council make such a proclamation and create such a celebration. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. I was trying to get it all in order, Mrs. Morelli. I was going to come to you, Mrs. Morelli. I won't forget you. Good evening, sir.
Good evening, sir. Mario Romo.
I'm sorry. I was just trying to keep everything in order, from Highlands to this, so...I'm sorry. Go ahead, sir.
But you keep on interrupting me. Mario Romo, 36 Plaza Street. Fourteen years ago, my wife and I decided that it was economically better for us to leave Park Slope, Brooklyn, and come to New Jersey. At the time, many of our acquaintances and friends were going to a place called Maplewood. And of course, we came and we looked in Maplewood. Didn't work. Didn't like it. It was very cute. Ended up here. And when I speak to people that have moved here and recent residents, we always talk about the diversity. Now, when I speak about diversity in West Orange, I'm talking about my next-door neighbor...neighbors, one Hungarian, one Guatemalan, one Honduran across the street married to an Italian, Jewish, and Irish next door, two Russian families, a Haitian family, an Indian family, an American...Native Americans are not in that mix. But this all happens in one block on my street, one block. And what makes it so enticing and such a place to be proud of is that it's not broken up into areas of different people all huddled together. We are mixed. We are a beautiful woven fabric in West Orange. I'm very proud of it. What is part of that fabric way down deep in the warp and weft of it is our history with the Native Americans. Native Americans have been part of our history since you guys first got here, okay? My ancestors, like hers, were already here. It's hard to...it's hard for me to think of what is overlooked when we talk about Native Americans. You know, we talk about, you know, the Navajo code-talkers, you know, and it's like, wow, it's really great. Does anyone know that there were sixteen different tribes that were code-talkers during World War II? In World War I, the Choctaw Indians were the first code-talkers. No one knows that. No one talks about it. No one brings it up. No one...no one talks about...Ben Franklin said that he attributed to the Iroquois Nation the structure of our constitution, because there were six tribes that had the concept that we have in our government right now of federalism, but then states' rights being separate from it, and that's the way the Iroquois Nation was run. We do not recognize all of the contributions that have been made by Native Americans to this country. And what I want to do is to agree with you folks, you two guys, and propose not only that we have that Native American Week, but that we actually start it off on Saturday before Thanksgiving with a ceremony by the town acknowledging what Native Americans have meant to this country. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Romo. Mrs. Morelli? Good evening.
Rosemary Morelli, Ralph Road. Tonight, I'm going to speak about the manner in which these council meetings are conducted and how the citizens who are...who speak are continually accused of being rude, especially by you, Mr. Guarino. I would like to make it clear that I'm not here tonight to defend my past comments. When I speak before this body, I'm speaking as a taxpayer, which makes me your employer, and I'm assessing your job performance, which is also my First Amendment right. I think Mr. Meyerowitz at the previous meeting made our role very clear. He also needs...he also needs to be made clear...can't read my own writing. What also needs to be made clear is a poor performance appraisal is not being rude. You're elected officials and therefore open to criticism and comments of dissatisfaction from your constituents. Mr. Guarino, at the November 10th meeting, you did what, in my opinion, was a very poor job, specifically the segment about the recycling center. You are totally in charge of the meeting, allowed Ms. Zalino to be vilified and become the issue instead of the recycling center, which was the only issue. My comment at the meeting was that I was underwhelmed with Mr. DeFeo's presentation, and that was putting it mildly. Having attended numerous presentations, which in the business world are called dog-and-pony shows, I spotted a familiar tactic used when making visual presentations, and that is when the presenter wants to make a very critical point, he or she leaves the visual or a slide on the screen while continuing to speak beyond the issue. But the audience continues to focus on the screen, and it makes a deep and lasting impression. In Mr. DeFeo's presentation, he did this with a slide that portrayed Ms. Zalino as someone special...who's getting special perks, which we learned...later learned were not, in fact, true. I think they call that subliminal suggestion. Mr. Guarino, at that point, you allowed Ms. Zalino to be the issue. You failed to do your job. You also failed when, at the beginning of the recycling center segment of the meeting, you did not set out the format that no questions could be asked of the presenter during his presentation, and that question would only be...and that questions would only be allowed at the public portion of the meeting. Your council colleagues also commented on the fact that the format should have been different. Also, your response to Ms. Zalino's neighbor who asked a question during the presentation was very harsh. The gentleman left the meeting in disgust. You owe him an apology. I would like to offer you some suggestions that you should take under consideration. These are complaints and comments several citizens have made to me. One, be consistent when you allow citizens to speak out. This comment is based on the fact that you have allowed some people to make comments after the public meeting and not allowed others to do so. It's been perceived as selective privilege. You need to be consistent. Council members and members of the administration should not be allowed to interrupt when someone's speaking. Happens all the time. Ensure that council members answer all the questions asked by the speakers at the meeting, and perhaps poll the speakers after the council member comments to the public to make sure that they have been...they have been answered, comments that...make sure that questions have been answered. Being I have time, Mr. Tranquilist at the last meeting made a comment about the invoices going viral. I would only offer their public records gotten under the Oprah, which is an open public record. How could they be viral? Thank you. Also, I did get an anonymous letter, and some of you have gotten one, I'm sure. The person who sent it to me talked about several things that she or he sent to the mayor, and it seems like a lot of that stuff was talked about tonight, the dissatisfaction with some of the services and what's going on in this town, which seems to be on a downward spiral.
Is there anyone else wishing to speak to the council?
Hi, Mark Meyerowitz, 19 Howell Drive. The Chronicle reported that the mayor or the administration or this body sent a letter to Prism because their taxes were...are late again, so I'd like to verify that that has been done. And last year and the year before, I guess, they paid up...they paid their taxes at the end of the year by...by end of December, I suppose. And I'd like to know if the administration or the council as the redevelopment authority has any plan in case this year they don't pay up in time? Because I want to make sure that these letters that you sent to Prism aren't just for show so you could tell the Chronicle, "Oh, we're doing something," but that you actually have something in store that has some real teeth to it, to make sure that Prism finally does what they're supposed to do with the...with the contract. So that's my first question. Is there a plan in case Prism does not pay their taxes? And my second point about the building is I'm very concerned about the structural integrity of the building, because it's been sitting empty for how many years? Eight years, ten years? And, you know, it goes through heat and humidity and water, and now it's very, very cold and it's going to start freezing again. And the last thing we need is for residences to be built in a building that is not structurally sound. And concrete and rebar...I'm not an expert in construction, far from it, but I do know that concrete and rebar, once they start to deteriorate, can become very, very weak. And this is something that, you know... And this is something that, you know, really should be a major concern now for the council as redevelopment authority and the township because what we don't want is for construction and people to start living in this place, then all of a sudden we have things falling apart, or worse, or collapsing. I mean, it is possible. The building's been sitting empty for 10 years, and it really hasn't been, as far as I can tell, it really hasn't been secured against nature. So I would like to know is, if the mayor or the township or the, or the council has any plan to check on the structural integrity of the building, to give it a real test, not just, you know, not just a quick wave of the hand. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any else wishing to be heard? Yes, Anthony. Thank you.
Hi, Anthony Puglisi, representing County Executive Joe DiFenzenzo this evening. Just want to share some information about some upcoming holiday events. First of all, in three days, day after Thanksgiving, is the beginning of our Holiday Light Spectacular at Terrebaque Zoo. It goes from the November 27th to January 3rd, 5:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m. every night, except for the first two weeks when it's just on the weekends. We do have several themed weekends with princesses and ice sculptors and all other kind of winter events, not just beyond, so it's more than just holiday lights. And the construction of the new giraffe exhibit is complete, although we don't have giraffes yet. They'll be coming in the spring. We do have that section open, so you can get a preview of what that exhibit's going to look like, and there are lit giraffes on site, so you get a little taste of what's going to be there. Also, there's a holiday house tour on December 5th and 6th. Included in that is Glenmont. And then in the December 5th is the deadline for our gingerbread house contest at the Environmental Center, and it's a sustainable homes and habitat contest, so we encourage entries to have things like solar panels and rain barrels and things like that. And then all through the month of December, Kipps Castle in Verona is open to the public. The first floor is decorated in a 1928 theme. And all this is on our website, which is essexcountynj.org.
Thank you, Anthony.
Thank you.
Have a great Thanksgiving. You too. Okay. Anyone else wishing to be heard? Seeing none, I close public comment, and I open the public comment to my council colleagues, Councilwoman McCartney.
Before there be any response as to the issue of West Essex Highlands, that we be able to have our executive session and then you can report to the public in light of that.
Right. Okay. Councilwoman McCartney. Thank you, Mr. Sherry.
I'm not really sure where to begin. I think work from the, my notes up. Mark, I, I don't see, oh, do you? I'm looking over here. Okay. I wish I had my research on Edison Concrete. Again, we don't own that property, and I'm sure that all the structural integrity of that building will be looked at when the actual construction on the project begins. And taxes have been paid, so they have been paid in full, and though it is puzzling, it is with 18% interest on delinquent taxes. I am really sorry to hear from the resident on Corwell Circle about the leaf collection. I do appreciate people coming forward at the council meeting to bring us this because I have to tell you on Facebook, we're getting thank yous for the leaf collection, so, you know, people are posting that, that work is being done. So I'm very sorry to hear that that's not happening in your area. The administration is here. Mr. Sayers is shaking his head, yes, it will be addressed, and, okay. So thank you for that. Thank you for bringing that information to us. Leanne, I apologize if you felt bullied. I know that you are so intimately involved with that, and I, I apologize if you felt that way about the presentation on the recycling center. For me, it was informative to see what Wayne was talking about. I know that you have a totally different perspective on it, and I don't even know how many years it's been when we asked you to be the eyes on the property, and you have been. So I'm sorry. We'll do the best we can with the inspections, and hopefully there is, they will be as accurate as the information that you bring forward. On the Native American topic, I have to say that I shared with Councilman Guarino how many states across America that are recognizing Native American Heritage Day, so I appreciate the comments that were made about it. I really like Mr. Romo's comment about the metaphor on the woven fabric because the neighborhood you described sounds like my neighborhood. I'm sure all of us. Tim said the same thing about the diversity and the Human Relations Commission. I think it's a perfect fit for you. Again, I appreciate the comments that were made. My understanding is that a proclamation would come from the mayor's office. We can certainly recommend it. And we have done, you know, I think of the country of India, we have done India Independence and Day and—
Haitian Day.
Yeah, Jamaican flag raising. So there are other, and again, I just mentioned before about the Filipino Theater Group, that a production that's being, the Philippine history. So I believe that the community does, would and could recognize anything that's brought to our attention. So my understanding is that the states that do recognize that it is the day after Thanksgiving that has been designated as Native American Heritage Day. And if you have legislation that you can share with us to promote that, I would appreciate it. And the comments you heard about the West Essex Highlands after executive session, we'll be able to comment further on that.
Thank you, Councilwoman. To Native American, thank you for making your presentations and your heartfelt presentations. And yes, my neighborhood is exactly the same thing, the metaphors and, and the looking at the makeup of the township of West Orange. And I think, as I said, something comes from the mayor's office proclamation, but what I would like you all to do is to work with our PRC and working with our HRC and putting together programs that you would like to see us have here at Town Hall during that time. Let's make a concerted effort. If you want to get something done and have it done appropriately, we, we can work as a team and, and get those things done. But I commend you on your presentation, I commend you on your, to recognizing a segment of the population that for years was not recognized for their contributions to our great country. Because remember, we are all different, and we all come from different backgrounds, but what makes us great is the understanding of everybody else's feelings, their ways of life, and appreciation of what you've contributed to the United States of America. So I thank you. And whatever we, you know, please reach out to us and let us know what we can do.
I mentioned, Anna, that you're sitting right next to our public information officer, so if you exchange information, we can, we can go from there.
So Anna, Mario, and Tim, thank you. So thank you for being here. Leanne, I owe you an apology if, because I didn't realize, if the presentation was to do any harm to you, that wasn't my intention. It was an education for me to see what's actually going up there and to get an idea of what needs to be done up there and what things are not being realized. So I do owe you an apology because it wasn't my intent to have the presentation and have it come as a slam to you. So that's not, that was not the intent. But it was, the presentation was an education for me, so I know what I have to look out for too with the facility. Mark, the Edison Building's made of Portland, you know, Edison's, they couldn't knock it down with a ball. But I'm sure when they go further building, like I said, the construction code officials will do their due diligence so that the residents, when they go in there, are in a safe environment. To the resident of Corwell Circle, I'm sure the administration will address it. We're sorry that, you know, that you feel you're not getting the services you deserve, and I'm sure the administration will, will look into this, but we all deserve, you are taxpayers, and you deserve the services due to you, and I'm sure we'll, we'll work out, we'll go up to that. Let's see. And Claire, and to Ms. Sevstry, thank you again. Thank you, Girl Scout Group, for doing that for many people who goes through the winters without having a decent coat and warm. So my compliments to you, and keep up the good work. Thank you very much. Councilman Kukrovjak.
Thank you, Council President. I want to thank everybody who came up and spoke today. There was a lot of, a lot of preparation, a lot of good thought, and we greatly appreciate your coming up and speaking. I'm going to save my comments for West Essex Highlands until after our executive session, and we'll see some further details at, at that point. On Corwell Circle, I'm sorry to hear the complaints, and I'm very interested in how the administration responds to your comments, so please consider emailing the council and letting us know. And Mr. Sayers also let us know about the situation with both the leaves and the snowplowing because if, if we're not doing as good a job as we can, then, then we need to fix it. So I appreciate Ms. Siri coming up and, and raising these issues for us. Ms. Alino, I was, I won't say I was shocked at the presentation at the last council meeting, but I could not understand why a presentation that was supposed to be about a recycling center and its compliance with state regulations and also with being a good neighbor to the neighbors surrounding the property had anything to do with you. And I really would like to hear an explanation from the administration on why Ms. Alino was part of that presentation, which was supposed to be about the recycling center. And I'm further troubled by some of the issues that Ms. Alino raised at tonight's meeting, and I'm sorry, I couldn't write fast enough to keep track of everything you were saying. But I hope that you will provide this material to the council and to the administration so that we can find out exactly what the facts are, and we can determine how good of a job Mr. DeFeo is doing on our behalf. So I, I know I don't have to encourage you to stick with this because I know you're a person of great perseverance, but I really do think that we need to address all of these issues, including why you were part of Mr. DeFeo's presentation. It was supposed to be about the recycling center, not about someone who lives across Mount Pleasant Avenue and who is simply doing her job as a resident to hold their government accountable. And I would very much like to hear what the outcome of the two odor complaints that were discussed at the last council meeting and the further progress on them. And I want to thank the people who came up and discussed and suggested better celebration of the Native American contribution to our country. I can't imagine that there's any reason why we can't do any of the things and I think that were suggested, and I think Council President made a very good point, that the HRC is, is a very good place to generate these types of, of not only raising awareness for our local community, but also putting together the, the celebrations and the ceremony. So I look forward to, to hearing from you guys very soon. Thank you for speaking. Ms. Morelli, again, I thought you did an excellent job tonight talking about some of the issues that have come before, the, the council before, and, and I think you make the very good point that you're simply giving us an assessment and, and your intention is not to be rude. Your intention is to be direct, and we need to take that in the, in the spirit in which it is given. You're absolutely right, we work for you, and if it's possible that we can be doing better jobs for you, one of the ways we're going to be able to determine that is by having the residents let us know. And I think tonight is a great example of a wide variety of people who came to the council and pointed out where their government can do a better job serving them. So, so thank you, and also for your suggestions. I, I think they're excellent. We really do need to be more consistent in the way that we treat public speakers. I'm of the opinion, if somebody that I work for wants to talk to me, even at a public meeting, we should let them. We should let them come up and, for a limited amount of time, and it's not going to be a circus, but again, we work for you, and we should be available to hear from you, good Mr. Meyerowitz, thanks for bringing, bringing up two excellent issues. What's the plan if Prism doesn't pay taxes? To my way of thinking, there are actually two different branches of the issue. The first issue is paying property taxes on time is a requirement under the contract that we have with the redeveloper. They are supposed to pay their taxes on time, or else it is an event of default, and then under an event of default, they could potentially lose their designation as the exclusive redeveloper in the redevelopment area. So Prism has been delinquent in their taxes, a clear event of default under the contract for 18 straight quarters, going back to August of 2011. So this isn't an occasional thing, and as Councilwoman McCartney points out, it doesn't seem to make any sense to be delinquent in the taxes, not only because it's a requirement of the contract, but also because they have to pay 18% penalty. And I think we all know why anybody in 18 straight quarters not paying their property taxes on time and having to pay 18% interest, why anybody would do that. It's because they can't do anything else. So I've always taken that to be a suggestion that the redeveloper may not have the financial capabilities to complete this project, and the fact that we're coming up on the ninth, ninth year anniversary since they've been given approval to move forward with the project and we're still stuck here is perhaps another indication. But there are two, there are two issues here. One is the compliance with the redevelopment contract, and the second is that they need to be paying the taxes just like anybody else. But under the, under the law, if they are delinquent in their taxes, the property can be put up for a tax sale. But I think we should keep our focus on both issues. One is the compliance with the contract, which they haven't done for 18 straight quarters. And you're correct, last year, they did not pay their taxes until December 19th, an entire, I'm sorry, December 29th. An entire year's taxes from last year were delinquent and weren't paid until December 29th. But they've paid other taxes at various times. And I heard from Councilwoman McCartney tonight that, that they have paid the taxes that were due on November 1st, that result, they were delinquent on those taxes resulted in a notice of default and gave them 30 days to pay the taxes. According to Councilwoman McCartney, those taxes haven't paid.
Yes.
Did we get an email on that to tell us?
No.
How do you know?
I called to find out.
Mr. Sayers, I thought, you know, I, we've been discussing this for, for many council meetings. When a major event like this takes place, you've actually been very good about letting us know when the letters of default have gone out, and I, I really appreciate that. But certainly, we, I think the council would be equally interested if and when they paid their, their property taxes. So I'd appreciate if you could just tell us—
I will let you know if that happens again.
Okay. Could you just tell us when they paid and—
November 20th.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I also had just, this might be a good time, I had just also asked to see if we could get any update on any of the other sort of outstanding issues on redevelopment. The status of the construction loan, have you heard anything from the redeveloper on that?
I have not.
The status of signing the August 2015—
I haven't heard anything about that.
Do you know anything about any of the recent construction activity that might be taking place on this?
No. I, like I said last time, when I replied there, there were people doing some surveying and I haven't seen any actual construction work going on since the last, last week. But I haven't been, I mean, I go by there once in a while, not every day.
And just for people who are playing along at home, under the August 2015 agreements, which have not been signed and executed yet, Prism was supposed to start construction on the site, or the new developer, redeveloper was supposed to start construction on the site September 30th, so there's been some— 30th. So, there's been some discussion here on the council about what constitutes construction and whether that, in fact, is going on. So, I'm just asking the questions to try to keep up to date with that. And, thank you, Mr. Puglisi, who's, I'm inspired by your diligence in coming to here, to our council meetings, to give us the news from the county's perspective on crutches. I'll note that it was a year ago, almost to the day where I had hurt my leg, my knee, in a absolute freak leaf-breaking, leaf-collecting accident that I still don't understand, but I was on the crutches. Now, Councilman Cirillo is on crutches, you're on crutches. Godspeed. Get off of them as quickly as you can. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilwoman Castellino.
Okay. Let's see here. Ms. Patel, Marion, Tim, thank you for coming down this evening and making this known to us. Ironically, I just saw, I've been watching commercials for the recognition of our Native Americans on TV recently. So, it is a national movement, and I think it will be apropos to celebrate it here in West Orange. In regards to our students, I know every year, fourth graders always have to do a project about the Lenape natives that lived in New Jersey, and until they closed it, there was the Lenape Valley of American, remember what it was called? The Route 80. There was a great place, the Waterloo Village.
Waterloo.
Waterloo, that we always took the students to, and great trip, great trip. So, we try to recognize it throughout the district. The Little Ones always this week of Thanksgiving celebration, but I think we should, Tim, you could, you know, talk to the school board and see what other activities that they do recognize, because I know, you know, through the years doing homeworks with my own children, that there are many activities, and maybe you could let it known, and maybe we can incorporate something for next year. So, I think this is something that will be nicely planned for the future. And, let's see here. But thank you again for bringing that to our attention. There are many, many different events we could incorporate it with. Leanne Zalino, thank you for coming down. We chatted last time after the last meeting. For those who you don't know, a little disclosure, Leanne had purchased the home from my parents, and so I know firsthand some of the issues that were going up there on Mount Pleasant Avenue, and, you know, when the wind blows, and, you know, they have to keep on top of that smell. So, I appreciate you coming down. However, I will make this comment, as far as that slide, and I apologize, because I wasn't paying attention at the time. Well, I kind of was, because I was thinking about the trench, and the reason why I called Leanne, because I was wondering why the trench was mentioned on the slide, because I couldn't figure out why a trench would, you know, would be needed, and then she explained to me they had just had given her dirt. But that slide was on for a little bit long, he did kind of stall there, so whether that was accidental or not, I could see why that was interpreted that way, so we'll have to be more mindful of that. Let's see. Ms. Siri, I know my leaf collection, every year, I haven't noticed a change. Has there been a lot of residents complaining, Mr. Sayers, about the snow? I know last year was a brutal winter, and that didn't help matters any. But did we have a lot of complaints with residents, and if so, how do we try to resolve them?
I mean, we get complaints every day. So, you know, it's not like, I can tell you whether we got a lot more, a lot less, but it's no diff, it's probably not any different than it has been.
I mean, the area where she lives, is that hard to navigate for the-
No. What happens is-
Contractors?
This happens a lot. I mean, with all due respect, and I understand it, because it happens to me. When I shovel my own walk, and all of a sudden, I shovel everything, and the plows come by, and they push the snow back. Unfortunately, that's the way a snowplow works. There's no way to plow a street without pushing snow back, unless you're plowing in the center of the street. When you plow up to the curb, every time you're plowing up to the curb, it pushes snow back. You know, we get complaints about that a lot, where people say, "Oh, I just shoveled my driveway, and a plow came by, and they plowed my driveway back."
Okay.
Then you get the complaints from people that say, "Well, you didn't plow too close to the curb, and now I can't park my car in the street, send the plows back and do..." So, it's six of one, half a dozen the other. It's, unfortunately, it's the nature of the beast, and I hate to say it that way, but when you plow, that's what happens, and if the snow is higher, it's obviously worse. You know, the less snow you have, the easier it's going to be to push ahead. The higher, the more snow you have, the harder it's going to push, and the more is going to be pushed back in and out of your driveway. But I have not gotten more complaints than we normally get, is the best I can put it.
And has the leaf pick up in less this year? As you mentioned, the five days versus the 11?
You know, I spoke to, I'm sorry, I forgot your name.
Siri.
Mrs. Siri. I spoke to Mrs. Siri today, and I told her that I was going to speak to Mr. Laporte and Mr. Solis tomorrow morning and find out exactly what kind of schedule. I think we're on a three-week schedule, I'm not sure though, so don't hold me to that. I know we've covered the town at least once, since we've started. You know, we do have 100 miles of roads that we take care of. So, we finished our first round, and I know we're into our second round, but I'm not sure what the-
And all the dates are up on the website?
Yes. We output our website, it shows the, what we're doing now, actually, we changed it a little bit. You have your area, and you look up your area, and every week, we're posting where we are. Because sometimes what happens is, is we can be in an area that may take us a week to do, and yet, if you're out there when the leaves are less than normal, it may only take us five days. So, if it takes us five days, then we're going into another area. So, what we're trying to do is, every Thursday, we're posting on the website what area we're going to be in. So, anybody who wants to know where we're going to be, just go to the website, and every Thursday, that date will change.
Okay, okay. And, Ms. Siri, also, in regards to, and I just can't help myself, in regards to your comments about our school system, please see me after the meeting. I love to ask you, you know, what issues you may have had with the school district. I feel that we do an excellent job here in West Orange, and I felt bad when you had some, you know, you weren't happy with the school system. So, please see me after the meeting. I'd love to discuss those issues with you. And, Mr. Meyerowitz, you know, I'm glad they paid their taxes, Prism. Again, I don't know, you know, why they're late, but they did pay, and they, you know, how many days late before they got hit with the penalty, Mr. Sayers?
You have actually 10 days from the first of the month.
So, there were 10 days?
After November 10th, you get charged interest.
Okay. But it's all paid, everything's paid in full?
Yeah, I don't know what the interest payment was.
Okay.
And just to follow up on that, after the grace period, you go back to the first day to start paying the 18 percent interest.
Yes. Okay, and let's see, I missed one. And thank you for the residents of West Essex Highlands for coming down, in case anybody leaves while we're in executive session. I appreciate everyone coming down this evening to voice their opinions. And, we're here, we're here to listen, try to find out answers for you, and appreciate your time spent here this evening.
Thank you. So, I'd like to thank the residents for coming down this evening. I'd like to show that you are interested in what goes on in your township, and that's why it's good for you to come to our council meetings and speak your mind, and let us know how you feel. So, thank you very much. Another public comment is done. Madam Clerk?
Continue.
I'm not executive, but I'm saying, if no one is going to pull any resolutions tonight, I'd like to recommend that we go into executive session, so the residents don't have to wait for us to go through the whole agenda. So, if we are not pulling any res, yes, Councilman, you are?
I am pulling one.
So, they're going to have to, okay.
You need to pass.
Right.
If no one's going to pull anything, we can go through-
We can go wait till-
We can finish.
Right, okay.
Is anyone pulling any resolutions?
Councilwoman McCartney, are you pulling anything?
I'm not.
I'm not pulling anything. Councilman Kukrovjak?
I would like to pull Agenda Item E, Resolution 274-15, Resolution Authorizing Change Order Number One with Regio Construction for $15,000.
Anything else, Councilman?
That's it.
Thank you. Councilwoman Castellino?
No.
Okay. Madam Clerk, with Consent Agenda?
Okay. Is there a motion? Oh, well, let me go through the other part of the consent agenda quickly. Approval of minutes of previous meeting, public meeting, November 10th, 2015?
Consent.
Consent.
Report of Townshipal Officers None, reading of petitions and communications and bids None. Bills, are there any questions on the bills?
Consent.
Consent.
Okay. Resolutions, we already went through. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Some.
Some.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The consent agenda is implemented. Now, we can go into executive session.
Now, we go to executive session, okay. We will be back very shortly. We won't be meeting any further sessions, so please, you may wait if you like. We'll be back shortly. Evening, West Orange. We're back from our executive session, so Madam Clerk, I'd like to make a motion to reconvene as a township, come out of executive session, and reconvene as a township council.
Mr. Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Should we introduce our grave?
Yeah, they come.
I'd like to ask our, I'd like to ask our Township Attorney and Mr. Hargrave to come up to the podium. Northgrave, I'm sorry, would you, Northgrave, would you like to come up, please?
Yeah, I'll start, and then I will tag team, and he'll clean up any errors. Thank you, Council President and Council members, and I apologize to the public for taking a short period of time and you being on uncomfortable benches. My name is Richard Trank, and I've been privileged to be the Town Attorney for West Orange since 1998, and literally, almost since the beginning, we have been involved with this property. And obviously, there is nothing better than seeing Mr. Bunis, who has, is always elegant, and it's always an honor to be in his company, along with all the other members of this community. Mr. Northgrave's a partner with the firm McManaman in Scotland. They have vast experience in every aspect of land use and environmental. Mr. Kizer, our Assistant Town Attorney, has also been involved in the litigation with regard to this site. So, we have intricate, intimate knowledge, and this has evolved over many, many years, and unfortunately, this, we're not at the end of this process, and the process is literally unfolding as we speak. And we hope to the benefit of everyone, but this is a process that you have to be part of. So, we want to assure you that the current litigation that started in 2010, five years ago, Mr. Northgrave and his firm have been fighting it nonstop. That litigation involves two major issues. And again, I have to be extremely, and one of the reasons we're not going to be able to take questions, that doesn't mean we won't talk to you offline, so to speak, but is, you know this is a public meeting, and you can be assured that the developer will have this tape by tomorrow morning at 10:30. They have the resources, they have been involved in this litigation, and they have literally used things that have been said by public members of your boards and by your Township Council in past litigation. So, the bottom line is, it involves two things. At one point, and one of my favorite attorneys, Francine Astor, is also a member of the community, so I have to give her a shout-out, because I love her. So, the bottom line is, the current litigation involves a rezoning of your property, which included a master plan change, and involves a challenge to our tree ordinance. So, net-net, Judge Goldman, who had this case before Judge Vena, when he ruled on this case, he said, "This property is going to be developed. It is owned by a private property owner," and that is the law of the case. Now, that doesn't mean it's going to be developed with 400 units or any of those numbers that we've heard over the last 20 years at all. And you know that for literally the last 20 years, there have been an evolving analysis of this property, and of course, the steep slope is of critical importance to you and to this entire community. So, what happened was that there were issues getting ready to be decided in the Superior Court, and in approximately June, Mr. Northgrave said, "If the developer is going to make, wants to make a proposal before we get either up or down, which we may not be very happy with, now would be the time to have a discussion with them." And again, the immediate response of the administration, i.e. through the mayor, was, "Let's go meet with the community. Let's meet with the condominium association, let's make sure they're engaged." Keep in mind, your condominium association has a right to intervene in this litigation. They chose not to, I respect that. As you know, intervening in litigation is expensive, but we went to them, because we wanted to make sure that your current board, and your current board, like every other community, does change from time to time, we wanted them to know where that litigation was at and what the risks were to development there. Those meetings occurred in June of this year, and your board was excellent, they were receptive. We encouraged them to speak directly with the developer, saying that, hey, because we all know we went through the worst real estate recession of our life, so there was probably a period of time when the developer wasn't that anxious to do whatever there. But, net-net, a number of discussions were facilitated since June to now, and I believe they're ongoing up and through today, and they, I think next week, there may actually be a meeting. And, from the town point of view, we've just tried to say, "Do it. Meet with the community, have a public meeting." Mayor Precy was adamant. If there is a plan to be proposed, it should start in your community, so you can ask the questions, understand it, and see what it involves. Because, again, the goals have always been the same, the least disturbance possible, and obviously, something that is a quality project within, obviously, all the limitations that we are aware of. So, net-net, those discussions, Mr. Northgrave can comment, as to the extent we're even aware of them. We believe that there is something in concept, and the, but we said, "You've got to get the community to understand it, and to criticize it, or see what works or doesn't work." And there are certain needs of the community that have been articulated to us, i.e. road infrastructure and whatnot, that are, we understand, important to your association. So, what happened in August was, when Judge Vena, who was the judge after Judge Goldman, was getting ready to decide some of these issues, is, there was an agreement to dismiss that litigation without prejudice. And again, that would be the litigation to overturn our zoning ordinance and overturn our tree ordinance, which would then allow what I'll call the max, and I don't know what the max means. It may mean 136 single-family homes, it may mean more than that. So, basically, what happened is, everybody stepped back from the litigation and said, "Create a concept plan, show it to the community, and let's try to get this on track, one way or the other." And then, it's always got to go to the planning board. I want you to always understand that no matter what happens, even with the condominium, because they don't have the right to approve it, even if you're all on board, even if it was 10 houses, it always will go to the planning board for consideration, and that will always be a public process. There's nothing that's going to happen behind closed doors, because it just can't happen under the law. So, and so, what happened in August was, the litigation was dismissed without prejudice. There was a timetable set forth, where they were supposed to get this concept plan, show it to a lot of different people, including our engineers, just to see, is there any absolute flaws that exist, and then, there would be an application to the planning board. Again, that has not occurred yet. And that is the step we're at, and then, what the feedback we gave to them is, "Hey, meet publicly, start with the association and all the members of your community, so that you could see it firsthand, and literally, before it goes to the planning board." Because why have you see it for the first time in front of the planning board? That was our thoughts. So, that's where we're at. And again, as Mr. Northgrave articulated, there isn't a day or a week that goes by when I don't say, "When is that meeting happening at the Highlands?" And I wish I could tell you that I have an answer to that, and I know Mr. Northgrave doesn't, but I know that he has continued to say that over and over again. So, the issue with this resolution, I think it is, you know, obviously, the Open Space Trust Commission has a vital role, they've done some great work, and we've preserved a lot of property here. Obviously, their resolution of November 9th, you've all seen it. And obviously, when Councilman Kukrovjak reported that to me, and Councilwoman McCartney has sat with us at length, we said, "Hey, that's good information, but you, as a township council, should not weigh in on this issue now." Because one of the things we agreed, when we agreed to dismiss that litigation without prejudice, is we would allow an open and fair process for consideration of whatever development is proposed. We would not try to tip, we would not, because their key litigation claim is that we kept changing the rules, and that is a problem when government entities are alleged to have been arbitrary, capricious, and unreasonable. So, we said, "We'll step back and let the process unfold." back and let the process unfold." So, again, besides all of the other issues that are involved, forgetting whether anybody in this room has 25 million, or whether that's even the number, and again, I can't comment on it, because I don't know, forgetting whether or not that money's available or whatnot, the legal department has to say to the township council, "Number one, it's not your jurisdiction now. It's the planning board. And, and number two, if you pass the resolution saying that, besides the fact that it'd be purely advisory, it will be used in the litigation." And so, since we agreed to dismiss the litigation without prejudice and allow the process to at least unfold, there'll be plenty of time to discuss and debate all of those issues. Again, there is no deal that has been made at all, other than, we would allow an open and fair process to occur. But we keep saying, "Start with you guys. Start with the residents and the neighbors, and then, hopefully, if there becomes some consensus there, that will certainly, because it's, that will certainly have an impact. We can all appreciate, because it's in your backyard, literally, and in your front yards." So, I'm going to defer to Mr. Northgrave. Obviously, I, we will be available, again, not in this form, but always available, and obviously, the mayor is always available, and we totally respect how important this is to the entire community, especially the West Essex Highlands, the Highlands community. So, Mr. Northgrave.
I, I think I can be pretty brief. I think Richard covered most of the issues. I guess the issue right now is, there is a process going on between the homeowners' association and the developer. We're trying to see if there is a, a project that can be built that preserves, that preserves the steep slope, that limits the number of units, that, you know, provides some benefits to the homeowners' association, and doesn't negatively impact the township. And I have spent, as Richard said, I've spent five years litigating this matter. I have, over those five years, built up a fair amount of goodwill and, and respect with, with council, and somewhat, I guess, reflexively through to their client. I think to take action on an open space resolution, and as Richard says, it's advisory, at this point, would send the message that the town is not interested in seeing if there's any resolution. I think it's the wrong message to send at this point. There may be a time in the future where it would be appropriate, but this is not that time. At least, that's my advice to the council. This is not the time. If, or when it comes a time where there, you know, there is no, it doesn't look like there, we're going to be able to do anything, and we have to get full-blown back into the litigation, then it certainly should be something that should be considered then, but not now. And as Richard said, I am encouraging, you know, the developer and, and council, to the homeowners' association, to the board, to continue their discussions and hopefully come to something that, at least, you're not going to please everybody, but if, if most of the community understands and sees this as a benefit, and there is, and, you know, all the various goals are reached, then hopefully, we'll, we'll be at a place, and we can save ourselves the uncertainty. Because just the reality is, Judge Goldman's opinion does talk about, you know, let's, let's get our arms around the fact there will be development here. They could, as I said to council inside, they could build tomorrow, they could drop their lawsuit, file a zoning board application, build as of right 60 units, by their, by their estimation. I don't know that we have a major disagreement with that. I think that's probably right, just based on current zoning and, and, you know, application of the steep slope and the tree ordinance. So, the reality is, something would get built there, and it's, it's, you know, if we could put the homeowners' association in control of how that happens, I think it would be a benefit to the homeowners. It'd be a benefit to the developer, and it'd be a benefit to the township. And we can be part of the deciding what was going to happen, as opposed to having some third-party determiner for us all, and we may all wind up being unhappy. So, with that, my advice to the council this evening is, tonight is probably not the time to act on a resolution. I understand there's not even a resolution before you. As Richard said, at this point, you don't have the jurisdiction for that, but if you need to act, the time for that, there's, there's time for that in the future, after, after we see, after we let this process play out. And with that, I thank everyone for your time this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Northgrave.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm sorry, moving on. So, moving on, we hope that gave you a good idea. We hope you understand where we're coming from. If you need to ask, please email us questions, or please, at our next council meeting, the floor will be open to you, with all respect. So, please let us have, just email us your inquiries, if you, if you can't wait to the meeting, and we can try to address them. But I appreciate you all coming tonight, and understand that we are looking out for your best. We work, we do work for you. So, thank you. Okay, Madam Clerk?
Okay, Resolution 274-15, resolution authorizing change order number one with regioconstruction for the project Street Improvements Phase Two, in the amount of $15,000.
And all of you leaving, have a great Thanksgiving. Please enjoy. Have a good time with your families.
Happy Thanksgiving, love.
I didn't want, I didn't want to forget that.
This resolution was pulled by Councilman Kukoviac.
Councilman Kukoviac.
Do you want to wait for the hubbub to dry, die down, or do you want to just move on?
Just, just move on.
If I could, before we get to 274, I wanted to just ask a question about 273. This is a resolution that we've already approved, but because we were trying to get into the executive session, I just wanted to ask a question about it. Mr. Lepore, our town engineer, is not here. I just wanted to ask, in case someone knows who's here now, and can just can answer the question. The 273, Resolution 273-15 is for a professional services contract to the low bidder for $26,400 among three proposals that Mr. Lepore solicited. And I'm not asking the question about that, but I also asked him about the project. The project is to redo all or part of 23 streets in town, about 4.5 miles of roadway, with a contract that Mr. Lepore estimates will cost between three and a half and three and three-quarters million dollars. What I found striking is that of the 23 streets and the work that we're doing on each one of them, none of them listed new sidewalks. And I know the sidewalks have sort of come up a few times in the past six or eight months, just because I don't think that doing new sidewalks for entire streets is, is a good use of the money. I think it should be going to additional paving of the streets. But I'm just curious as to why it is of the 23 streets that we, we don't have any sidewalks in the construction work.
That I cannot address.
Yeah, I'm not sure, but like I said in the beginning, usually, if in fact we do do that, it's because either we've had trees there that have destroyed the sidewalks or something like that. So, I'm assuming the streets that he's picked out, maybe that's not happening. I don't know if that is the answer, but unfortunately, he had a personal issue, and he could not be at the meeting tonight.
Mr. Lepore did address that issue the last time he was here, I believe, and he basically said, you know, that he tries to use common sense, or his department tries to use common sense with respect to the sidewalks, and if there are problems, whether it's from heaving from trees or whatever, and he feels that it ties into the overall, you know, redoing the road, they just go ahead and do it. And I don't know all of the thought process that he follows when he makes that determination, but he's an engineer, and he's been here for many, many years, and he's seen this happen all over town, so I trust his ability to make those decisions.
I just think it's a good idea. I wanted to say, I think it's a good idea that we stop doing wholesale sidewalks and take that money and put it on doing more streets. Because I think he said, "We've got something on the order of 56 or 59 streets that they've identified need, need paving." And I think that's where the money should go, to the paving, as opposed to sidewalks. I just think that's a good thing. So, on the, on 274-15, I asked Mr. Lepore, I'm sorry, 274-15 is a change order requesting $15,000 to build three speed tables on a project that we are already involved in. And this would be adding a little bit additional cost to what is just under $3.1 million for a variety of roads in town, and raising it to just over $3.1 million. I'm not focused on the increase in the cost. He asked the, the construction firm that's already doing the major roadwork for bids to do the speed tables that the residents had requested, and they came up with a bid of $15,000. So, I just asked him, I asked Mr. Lepore, what were the last three speed table bids that we had gotten? Because it seemed like $5,000 per speed table was, was a lot of money. And what he sent me was the last three speed table bids that we had gotten, and the average of the last three bids were, ranged from $2,200 per speed table up to $4,600. And my thinking is that this, the contractor is already onsite, and he shouldn't be charging, looks like to me, above-market prices, when he's already got the asphalt there, and he's already there. And I, I just wanted to flag this, because I, I don't think this is a good use of our money. I realize that it might, if we bid it out, it might save us a few thousand dollars, but I just don't feel that I should approve this. So, I just wanted to flag this, tell people why, tell my council members, fellow council members why, and hope that they will follow me in not approving this, and instead, send it out to bid and, and probably get a lower number.
I, I spoke to Mr. Lepore about this, and he, he did indicate that he believes that, number one, that this particular work has been escalating over the years, whereas in years past, we did pay around $2,500. That, for a lot of reasons, that the, the cost of this particular type of work has been going up, and that the $5,000 was, was roughly similar to the last bid that we, that we had done. I can tell you that, you know, that, going out to bid would probably, the cost of doing the bidding would probably be, you know, if, if, if there was a couple thousand dollars of savings, the cost of doing that, you know, preparing a bid, and then actually getting it down the street and awarding it, would probably eat up any savings, if, if there were any. But Mr. Lepore was definite about that he felt very strongly that this, this was the right price under the circumstance, and that it could, the job, the job could get done on a timely basis, because the contractor's already on site.
I have a question.
Yes, Councilwoman, uh, Councilwoman McCartney. I'm sorry, Councilwoman.
That's okay.
Thank you. In the supporting documentation that Lenny did send us, send us, he said that the fee for each of these additional speed tables would include signs and traffic striping. So, I think that may be the range that you're talking about, the additional to get up to the $5,000 would include the signs and traffic striping.
I just want to make a point.
Councilwoman, okay.
Yeah, this, and I hear you with the cost, because it is bothersome when we see different pricing. But I know on Berry Drive, so this is Berry Drive and Holmes, these are, this is a direct cut-through to West Orange High School. A lot of people cut off Eagle Rock and fly down Berry, and then down Holmes, and a lot of the kids travel this route. So, I wouldn't want to delay the project either. But however, if, if we would save significant money, then that's, if you feel we would.
We don't believe that they're a big significant.
If I could just follow up, and I appreciate Councilwoman Castellino's comments, because once we do Berry, there will only be one non-speed table access between the high school and Eagle Rock Avenue, and that's going to be Phyllis. And I suspect that, that the homeowners on Phyllis are going to be coming to us probably within the next year, asking for speed tables there, too, because they'll be the only access without speed tables. And perhaps that's what we do, is that we combine the two. If we get six or seven, then we start to have six or seven speed tables. We start to have economies of scale and can probably save money that way. And that's the way I'd like to go, because I just, I can't imagine that Phyllis is not going to come back this evening if we don't do road work.
Yes, Councilwoman.
I can appreciate Joe's concern, but the residents have already petitioned the township, and the work is already being done. So, if we were to wait and go through the whole petition on Phyllis, I think that would not be fair to the residents that have been seeking this work. I don't know what the date is here, but it has been quite a while. I wouldn't be willing to wait. I'm sure they're going to come back, but I don't think, I wouldn't be willing to wait.
I'm, I'm a little bit embarrassed. I didn't ask the question about whether the work has been done. Do you understand that the speed tables have already been constructed?
They are going to be.
Or you're just talking about the street?
I'm talking about Phyllis. I was talking about Phyllis. So, yes, that Phyllis, they may come back, but the residents had already been petitioned, and now you'd have to start that process.
I'm sorry, maybe I misunderstood. Just for clarity, has, have the speed tables on Berry been constructed yet?
It says Berry Drive is being improved with new curb concrete apron.
Right.
Right. Now, Phase Two will be referred, resurfaced by week's end. This was dated November 18th.
Right. You, you see my question? You, you know that I have this thing about coming to the council to ask us to approve expenditures that have already been made.
Okay. Should I take a vote?
Yes, please take, yeah.
Do we know, you don't know, Mr. Gross, Mr. Sarris, do you know?
No, I do not.
Okay. Okay.
Can I make a suggestion? Can Mr. Lepore be here when we have these kind of expenditures?
He normally is, but he had a personal.
He had a personal issue, and he had to, and leave.
Mr. Lepore always makes it a point to be here when he has his on.
Unfortunately, I don't even know what the issue was, but I know he.
Yeah, okay.
Madam Clerk, I'd like to call for a vote on this.
Is there a motion to approve Resolution 274-15?
Some.
Second.
Councilwoman Castellino?
Yes.
Councilman Kukoviac?
No.
Councilwoman McCartney?
I'm saying yes, because the work, they're out there already. Lenny's saying this work needs to be done by week's end. The, the letter's dated November 18th. They're already there. I wouldn't hold it up to wait for anything else.
Council President Garino?
Yes.
Okay. Ordinances on second and final reading. Ordinance 2469-15, and ordinance amending and supplementing Chapter 7, Traffic Subsection 7-20, Stop Intersections of the Revised General Ordinances, Stop Intersection at Sheffield Terrace and Dartmouth Road with a Stop Sign on Sheffield Terrace. Is there a motion to introduce on second and final reading?
Some.
Second.
Council, I'm sorry, Councilwoman Castellino?
Yes.
Councilman Kukoviac?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Yes.
Council President Garino?
Yes. Is there anyone here from the general public wishing to be heard on ordinance 2469-15? Seeing none, I close public comment. Open to my council colleagues. Any comments? No, I close council comment.
Well, I'm just surprised it hasn't been done a whole lot sooner, coming down Sheffield Terrace onto Dartmouth.
I'm surprised, too.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve ordinance 2469-15 on second and final reading?
Second.
Councilwoman Castellino?
Yes.
Councilman Kukoviac?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Yes.
Council President Garino?
Yes.
Ordinance 2470-15, and ordinance amending and supplementing Chapter 7, Traffic Subsection 7-32.2, Restricted Parking Zones of the Revised General Ordinances of the Township, Handicap Parking Stall at 28 Cross Street. Is there a motion to introduce on second and final reading?
Some.
Second.
Councilwoman Castellino?
Yes.
Councilman Kukoviac?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Yes.
Council President Garino?
Yes. Is there anyone here from the general public wishing to be heard on ordinance 2470-15?
On 28 Cross Street?
Would you like to talk about it? Please. Good evening, sir.
How are you?
Good. Just state your name and address in the microphone, please, and you can pull it down toward you.
My name is Coney Treza. I live at 28 Cross Street in West Orange.
Good evening, sir.
How you doing tonight? I'm here.
We're about ready to approve this for a handicap stall at 28 Cross Street. I said, "We are about ready to approve this." You're here to...
No, I just want to ask a question. On my side of the street on Thursdays, you can't park from 8:00 to 10:00. Will I still, can I park there, or will I be towed? Will I be ticketed?
He asked me that question. I'm not really sure, but I think if it's a street sweeping, if it's a street sweeping issue, you probably have to move your car between 8:00 and 10:00 on that day.
Okay.
But we'll check with Mr. Lepore.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk?
Okay. Is there a motion to approve ordinance 2470-15 on second and final reading?
Some.
Second.
Councilwoman Castellino?
Yes.
Councilman Kukoviac?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Yes.
Council President Garino?
Yes.
Ordinances on first reading, 2471-15, Revised Ordinances Amending Chapter 2, Section 52.2, Public Relations Commission. Is there a motion to introduce on first reading?
Some.
Councilwoman Castellino?
Uh, yes.
Councilman Kukoviac?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Make a motion to nominate Michelle Castellino as the...
Introduction of this meeting.
Next.
Next.
And Council President Garino?
Yes. Yes.
Okay. That's it?
All right. Before we, we close for the evening, I just want to, on behalf of my council colleagues and the township of West Orange, wish each and every one of our residents to have a wonderful family Thanksgiving. Enjoy your togetherness, enjoy the holiday. Think about those who are less fortunate than, than you are, and do whatever you can to help those less fortunate on this wonderful holiday. And we'll see you at our next council meeting. Madam Clerk, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion is carried.
Good night, West Orange, and happy Thanksgiving.